Justin, will you come up, please? It'll just be real quick for you, don't worry. So, we're cutting, because Justin has to go. So, I just wanted to take a minute, because not all of you have met, and then you didn't meet Michelle last week when you were touring either. She's our clerk. This is Justin Mann. Justin started last Monday as our Director of Buildings and Maintenance. So far, he's come back for the second week, which makes me pretty happy. I did task him with learning the building first. And we'll get to budgeting, we'll get to all those other things as we go along, but identify the problems, learn the products, and move forward from there. Do you want to just introduce yourself and tell them a little bit about your background?
I'm Justin Mann, from the Roscommon area. I was part of a construction company for 28 years, and I tried my hand at teaching for CTE Building Trades Program. And Discover Teaching wasn't quite for me, so this opportunity presented itself, so I stepped up and made attempt at it.
Alright, that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Alright. Brownfield Committee reappointments. Ray? Lozinski, is that who you say is here?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ray Lozinski. I am the Chair for the Brownfield Authority. And with me today, I have Michael Briggs, who is up for reappointment to the Authority. Comes to us with many, many years on the Brownfield Authority in integral piece, and I would like you to consider his reappointment. Mike, you want to?
Hey, good morning. Thank you for letting me be here. Again, I'm resubmitting my appointment application. I've provided my resume and letter of intent to you guys. I don't really have anything to add there. I've been on the Board since, it's inception six years ago. And I think I can still contribute in a variety of ways. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yes, just a couple. Yeah, I noticed on your letter that you provided some technical expertise in that GIS piece, which is the county, correct?
Yes.
The county GIS piece. Very good.
That was one of the, when all the multispectral imagery and the GIS stuff was coming out of the black world, I was the Marine Corps and the Navy main project officer for that back in the early 90s. And so, I had some experience a long time ago, having done the technical stuff, but background there.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. He also plays excellent taps. We use them on a couple of occasions. Should the funding run out for the Brownfield Authority, guess who's going to play taps?
Alright. Just don't forget to mention Wendy also.
Right, Wendy Duroche, she's not here.
Okay, yes, Wendy is up for a reappointment offer.
And she's the current Chair for it right now, and she couldn't be here today because she's on travel.
Okay. So, I got elected to come here.
Hoorah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Optional health insurance buy-up plans.
Well, good morning again. I promise to fight the look that Rex gave me that we won't take forever. I think you all know Jennifer is our Advantage Benefits Group. I don't know your official title.
I'm the Benefits Consultant.
Okay. I was going to say, I don't know your official title. So, we are on our second round of alternative buy-up benefit options to be considered for our employees at Roscommon County. The first, the first go-round didn't really provide the relief or financial capabilities that we had hoped. So, we went back to the drawing board with some suggestions that came out of both a review with our union representatives and review with our elected office holders. And this is what we came back with. So, the first column that you have is the product that we have now, the Blue Care Network HMO HDHP, with the fully funded HSA on behalf of the county, and that is being built into the budget, or has been built into the budget. The option next to that is basically the same exact product. The only difference is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the amount that you pay as your co-insurance is 10% instead of 20%. So, therefore, if I go in for a procedure and my bill is $2,000, I'm not paying 400 automatically, I'm paying 200. So, it slows the amount that you're paying out. There's no other change? Correct. So, and it still would allow for the $1,700, $3,400 paid by the HSA that's in there for you. One of the questions that I was asked this morning, and Jennifer, I'll just have you clarify, is, does my deductible go towards my total out-of-pocket maximum?
Yes. Deductible, co-insurance, and any copays.
Okay, so if I am an individual, I have a $4,000 total out-of-pocket maximum? Put your glasses on, I take mine off.
Correct.
So, I would, if the county continues to put in $1,700, then I'm only going to be responsible for the difference between $1,700 and $4,000. And then after that, I'm not paying for anything?
Correct.
Okay. Just double checking. So, that is just clarification on that. So, the third option that we put in, which is really the reason Jennifer is here, because I haven't seen a traditional PPO product in a long time. And I just want to make sure that if there are any questions from the Board about this. So, the third option is a traditional Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO product. It is a Simply Blue. We went through the different PPO plans that they have, because we were curious, are there ones that they offer that might be lower out-of-pocket maximums, different co-insurance maximums? And the answer is, this is, this is kind of the best PPO that they offer to our group size. So, with that, one of the things that I want you to look at, this is a traditional plan. So, you are looking at your medical services where you go to the doctor, and you pay $30 for your virtual care, your PCP, a specialist, and urgent care in an emergency room. Now, Jennifer, this was one of the things we talked about. Does, do those copays that you pay when you go to those different doctors, does that count towards an out-of-pocket maximum under this plan?
They do.
Okay. Alright, so those would count towards the out-of-pocket maximum? One of the areas that it also has is, obviously, you would have to pay your deductible for advanced imaging and diabetes services prior to, so you'd have to meet, prior to the insurance kicking in and paying their portion of it, then you'd meet that 20%, and Blue Care would pay 80% of that cost. Your deductibles for in-network, and I tell people, don't go out of network ever with anything. It's just too expensive. My life lesson. So, an individual is $2,000, $4,000 for family. So, those deductibles are still very similar to where we're at. Of course, they're not being funded by the county under this plan, but they are a little bit more manageable as they go. So, once you have all of that kick into play, then you would have that advanced imaging and diabetes services that are allowed to go in. The prescription drug coverage is a very basic, very similar to what we used to have with tiers. Now, is there a change in the formulary?
Well, the formulary with Blue Cross is always changing. They're always looking at biosimilars and lower-cost equivalents.
But it'll be the same whether I have a PPO or?
Oh, correct.
Yes, okay. And I just wanted to make sure I knew that. So, there is, there's that, you're going to get the same drugs, no matter which plan you were to choose from. That being said, one of the other things I was hoping you would talk a little bit about was, I had talked to you about co-insurance versus total out-of-pocket maximum on that plan, and how those two jibe together, because those differences are pretty huge.
So, you know, in the world of insurance, there's deductibles, there's co-insurances, and there's copayments. And so, it gets confusing. But for the bigger-ticket items with the PPO plan, hospitalization, and as Jody mentioned, the diabetic care and whatnot, that's subject to deductible first. An individual would pay that first deductible. And where it says embedded, see where it says the embedded limit? It just simply says that if I'm in this plan, and I'm the only one sticking my family, I don't have a full $4,000 deductible, I have a $2,000 deductible. It's embedded, that's just an insurance word. After, if any subject to co-insurance exists, I pay 80%, excuse me, 20%. The plan pays 80%. So, if I have a co-insurance in a hospital after my deductible, I have a maximum co-insurance of $2,500. So, let's say I'm in the hospital for a month, I have a $100,000 bill, I'm going to have that $2,000 deductible and that $2,500 co-insurance. That's the most I'm going to spend in a 12-month period for a deductible and co-insurance. The out-of-pocket is a little misleading, because it says, okay, what's left? After deductibles and co-insurances, really, all that's left are copayments, right? That's an awful lot of copayments to add up to $8,150. When I was talking to Jody yesterday before the Affordable Care Act hit in 2010, copayments never added up to anything. We never had a ceiling on copayments. So, while it looks scary at $8,150, you would have to have so many copayments applied to something that, that really never even used to exist. But by law, the insurance companies have to put a maximum out-of-pocket in place. But the most people are concerned about what's my deductible limit, and what's my co-insurance limit, because copayments are quite affordable. Did that?
That made sense to me. At the very bottom of the page, second to the bottom, this is the question that has been asked, is employee contributions. So, if we're working on the 5% premium per pay over 26 pays, our renewal 5% is $1,659 for single, $39.82 for double, and then family is $49.77, and that is per pay. So, that's over the 26 pay periods. As you move down to the right, what they kindly figured out for us was, how much is, what is 100% of the difference plus the 5%? So, that'd be your buy-up. So, you'd be paying the difference plus your 5% of the base plan. So, in this instance, if you were an individual that wanted to go with the 10%, you'd be looking at $29.19 per pay. Two-person would be $70.60, and your family would be $87.57 per pay if you want to do the buy-up to a 10% instead of a 20% of the current plan. The PPO, obviously, any PPO is going to be more expensive. So, the per-pay costs for this, using that same formula of 100% of the difference plus the 5% of the base plan, is $95.70 per pay, $2.2968 per pay, and $2.8710 per pay. Any questions? Especially while I have Jennifer here.
So, if they go, if they choose to hop up to the second plan, they're basically going to double their amount they have to pay per pay period?
Yes.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question. So, the current plan plus the second column, which would be an option, versus the PPO? The PPO is the one where you should go in-network versus out-of-network.
Correct.
Others have any of that restriction?
They're all driven to the network. So, the two HMOs, the difference is, there is no out-of-network benefit. The PPO says, if you can find a provider that's not in the Blue Cross Blue Shield nationwide PPO plans, then you have a lower-level benefit. So, you can leave the network. The HMO plans, the one that's in place right now, if you go outside without its approval, you have no benefit.
So, do you have any idea of, this might be a far question, but sometimes you cannot find a qualified person in-network that you want to go to, right? Is that a true statement, especially in rural areas? It's sometimes difficult, or no?
Yeah, it can be, for sure. I mean, but the reality is, it's, it doesn't happen very often, because 99% of the providers in the state of Michigan belong with Blue Cross. So, it's very hard to provide, now, choice. Do you want to go to a different provider versus is a provider available? That happens. And that would have to be approved by Blue Care Network to go outside to a provider that's not local.
Okay, alright, that helps me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One other thing, as Commissioner Morley was speaking, that I thought we should touch on is, so with the HMO, obviously, you are going, you have to have your pre-authorization from your primary physician. How does that work with the PPO?
So, a PPO stands for Preferred Provider Organization, so there's way less rules, a lot less gatekeeping through a primary care physician. You can essentially just go to whomever you want, as long as they're in the network, without an authorization. Now, I say that, but most specialists still say, we want an authorization from your primary care doctor. So, although there's no gatekeeper requirement by the health plan, a specialist might say, you need to see your primary care physician, and they need to give the referral to me. But that's not a rule by the plan, it's a rule by that specialist.
So, the PPO plan provides that option for people that do not like the restriction of having to always go to, which is one of the negatives that we have heard about going to another HMO plan. So, it provides you that option of trying to seek out. And there, I mean, there are some specialists that you could probably call a dermatologist or a chiropractor, without having to worry about getting a referral from your doctor first to go to those types of specialists, where that definitely may come in handy. But yes, if you're going to go see a cardiologist, they're going to probably want to know you.
Or an oncologist.
Yes, or an oncologist, they're probably going to want you to have that referral first. So, that was, that was the option that we came up with to provide that alternative structure through Blue Care.
Would our plan be to offer the two higher ones as buy-ups?
That would be my suggestion, yes, that you offer those as buy-ups.
Do we have any indication as to the number of people that would participate in buy-ups?
I do not. I have not sent that question out yet. I wanted to see if you guys actually were interested in doing this first, if we're going to move forward. So, and I don't know, does, does Blue Care Network, do they have a, I mean, let's say I only have two people that want to enroll in the PPO. Are they still going to allow for that, or would they, is there a minimum number?
Yeah, if they go down to one.
Okay.
But if I was a gambling person, I would anticipate nobody will join that plan, as much as they want that freedom of choice for that cost differential and no money put into the HSA. That, that would be giving up a lot. But if, if folks feel as though they want that freedom of choice to go wherever, whenever, even though most are not going to exercise that choice, I think it's, I agree with Jody, then offer it versus, you know, making a decision for them. If they want to change their contribution to that much higher and give up that HSA money, as long as they understand, then that's an option to them. But they will go down to one.
It seems like, no matter how far we dig into this, this is as good as it gets.
These are really good plans. In terms of benchmarking, and I brought that up last year, I mean, when I benchmark these plans against most of our city, counties, non-municipality business, these benchmark at way high. So, I would say yes, based on what you're being asked to provide within the realm of your budget, these are excellent plans, and as good as they get. I know that there's, through conversation, folks have wanted Priority Health back. That isn't an option for another year.
They don't want to date us this year. Any other questions?
Yeah, so they don't want to take us, but is that because they can't after a year? Or are they just saying, we don't want you?
Good question. They have a two-year rule.
Two-year rule.
So, when you leave them as a client, they delay you being quoted again. I, I think they would love to quote you again for next year, for 2027, absolutely.
And do these plans that they're looking at now for options, does that change how they evaluate you when they are starting to run numbers and try to re-quote us in the next year?
Well, we would go back with your census, you know, and what plan design do you want? Those definitely play a part of it.
Okay.
And that is our plan, to go back and request a quote. I mean, even if we are quoting, hey, can you give us a quote for the same plans we currently have?
Right.
From them, to see if our utilization has decreased, our makeup has changed enough that it's affordable again. I think the big thing with Priority Health, for me personally, isn't even so much that there, what we had was better, because obviously, what we had was better as far as plan type at that time. It's just the general customer service that I, I found from Priority Health that I haven't found.
It's a Blues.
Yep. And that, that's not going to change, no matter how rich your benefit package is, in my opinion.
Okay.
We are to that point now, where we start to talk about open enrollment. Open enrollment is a must, it is a legal necessity that we must do. Everybody must participate in open enrollment and choose benefits. Otherwise, we are...
Non-compliant.
Non-compliant, which puts us in the position of not being able to offer benefit packages, cash-in-lou and those variations. So, we came up with a timeline, a month or so ago, trying to push everything back as far as possible, but still follow the requirements that the Blues sets for needing to get information to them. And in order to continue with that, we will need to make a decision. When was our first day of open enrollment?
Oh, boy.
See, this is where no well-being here would come in handy.
Mid-November to the latter part of November, because we have to build, I don't know if you're familiar with the enrollment tool Navigator, where everybody goes in. We, Advantage Benefits, has to build it. And if there's going to be two additional options, we have to build those options. We have to put the price in for those. And then folks have a meeting, we do those on-site, and then they make their elections. So, we're buddying up a little bit into a timeframe that we have to start implementing change, if there's going to be change.
Jody, has all our employees gotten a copy of this yet?
They have not all received a copy of it yet, no. It's just been shared with you guys as of right now.
Yeah, but we've talked about it, it's in the open.
Absolutely. They will all receive it now.
Some of them would like to say, let me look at it.
Absolutely. The judges did receive a copy of this last week.
You mentioned you talked to all the elected heads, department heads. So, they've, they've at least have seen this.
Well, they haven't seen this particular buy-up. They saw the first one.
Got it.
And the general reaction was, no. So, these were the options that they were made aware of, that we were mailing out. Rex and I attended that meeting, and so, I mean, he has the information that this was kind of the best of what we could come up with. If there was no going backwards, basically, would be, would be the way that I would share.
You need decisions probably before, in November.
Fair enough.
That's, for the latest, you'd want to push that limit?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Yep. And I know that, I know that in the last meeting that we had with our elected office holders, that we had discussed having something as soon as possible after this meeting. I had a couple people that have been gone on different training events. And so, I'm thinking that that's something maybe Michelle can help us schedule, so we can get that input of what's fair, what's not fair. Unfortunately, we, even starting two and a half months ago, we have come to a point now where we have to make a decision as far as how this is, how this moves forward.
Thank you.
Enhanced access to public record policy, discussion of the whole. Commissioner Wilson, would you like to start this?
Yes, this was in our policy book, and I've given it to our clerk to review, because a lot of it pertains to her office, and then also, I think it was GIS. I think the general feeling is that this is not needed. We already have things to cover this? Is that correct, Michelle?
Basically, the information that it was pertaining to in my office is the Register of Deeds office, which that is all covered by statute, state statute and such, so I don't really know what this is. I've never seen it before Rex provided it, so.
So, I guess, until the next meeting, look it over, see if you've got any input on it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson, sorry, Chair. So, what's the difference in somebody asking, obviously, for their public records of something or another, like we're dealing with, with the Health Department wanting information from GIS? Do we have rules, other than our pricing, or a policy on how we handle that? Is that something that might be needed, or is this completely separate? Completely separate issue?
The mapping service, maybe we need a policy on that?
Okay.
We have pricing on it now.
Correct.
But maybe, maybe we would need a policy for proper procedure to implement that?
Especially since we don't have truly a GIS department. And this reference in GIS, I just, that was my only question when I read it. It looked like it was out of date, but my question is, do we need something because of the way we handle GIS versus some other counties who have a GIS department? Just something to think about.
I don't think it's that complicated of an issue.
Okay.
I mean, someone wants services, we have a fee schedule, and it's taken care of. You know, I don't, don't know if it's really that big of an issue that we need a policy to cover it. I think administration and office more or less handles it.
Alright. Any other questions or comments? With nothing further on the work session, this meeting will be adjourned, and our next meeting will start at, on a clock. Morley?
Here.
Milburn?
Here.
Russo?
Here.
Wolfson?
Here.
Censor?
Here. Approval of the agenda. Before we do the approval of the agenda, I would like to add the taxi lane project update under unfinished business. Any discussion? Roll call?
Wolfson? Morley?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval of the consent agenda. There was a $10 error in the Class As at our last meeting, so that amount has been corrected in the minutes, and that should read $3,263,878.37. And claims and accounts were still the same at the $596,763.33. The items in the consent agenda were our meeting minutes from August 7th, 2025 special meeting, October 8th, 2025 board meeting, and the lake level control structure meeting, October 8th, correspondences A through I. Receiving a letter approving the childcare fund budget from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, letter regarding Hi-Fi numbers, MAC legislative updates, resolution from Grand Travers County, and the meeting minutes from the RTA meeting. Monthly department reports, September's 2025 animal control and shelter stats, and our administrator controller report. Do I have a motion for the approval of consent agenda? Can I roll call, please?
Milburn? Morley?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public comment on agenda items only. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Okay. Visitors. I believe Ray, you want to?
Good morning again, Commissioners. I'm Ray Lozinski. I am Richfield Township Supervisor, but I am also Chair of the Economic Development Corporation. And I just want to give you a little bit of update about what we're doing at the EDC. Very excited, we got some big things happening. One of the biggest things that I want to bring to your attention right away is, we have secured funding for a small-business loan program, and it's a loan up to 2025. have secured funding for a small business loan program, and it's a loan up to $5,000. Application's due by December 1, and distributed February 1, 2026. You know, it's a limited fund, so if you know of any business or any economic help that somebody would like, please have them call Brenda Bachelor, get the application packet. This is not a grant, it is a loan, so there will be a small interest rate charged on the loan. I just want to be clear and upfront about that. So that's one of the exciting things we got going on. We also have some other things going on in economic development, for those of you that might not know that we even exist. We are an arm that looks at the economy of Roscommon Township and what we can do to improve it, bringing in new business, improving old businesses, assisting people, whatever whatever happens. One of the big projects that we're dealing with now is housing. We're looking at workforce housing. There's a problem in Roscommon Township, or Roscommon County, I'm sorry, Roscommon County that, sure, the small business owner can, you know, people actually do want to work, but the problem comes in finding housing that's affordable, that they can stay here and work. We're finding that, talking to other people, we're finding that workers are, you know, they don't want to drive long distances because it's, you know, they're paying so much for gas now. So one of the subcommittees that we have is housing, and one of the things that we're trying to do is bring in developers and trying to get workforce housing. Prices are just astronomical, so we have to take a look at that and what can we offer, but that's going to be one of the major things we're looking at. Roscommon County, we realize relies on tourism for the most part, there are other businesses, you know, that we do know, but who's going to come to a county that all the restaurants are closed because they can't get workers? All the hotels are either dirty because they can't get workers or closed. Those are, you know, the things that we look at and the things we ask ourselves, and how can we approve upon that? So that's just, you know, one of the programs we have going. Some of you might be familiar with the Fish Trail, the Freshwater Trail, and what that is, is that is a program that was initiated in the EDC, but we partnered with the three Chamber of Commerce's in the in the county, and we put together a marketing committee. And the marketing committee was able to come up with a freshwater trail. Richfield Township got one of the first fish statues, and now we've got three of them up. We've got one in that township off of Sullivan Beach, and we got another one in Village of Roscommon off of their newly redone Wilson Park. So, you know, we're really excited about that, and we created a trail. It's a drivable trail, so that somebody coming in from, and we just use the Detroit area just as a a starting place. They come up southbound or northbound on 75, get off at 222 exit, they come into St. Helen, they're going to, you know, they could stop at the Fish, the Fish is going to have a QR code, it's going to have everything about St. Helen, where to go, what to do, what's there, you know, all that sort of stuff, a brief history of the town, all that sort of stuff is going to be there, and then that person can spend the day in St. Helen, and then travel on 76 here into Roscommon, spend the day in Roscommon, and then go into the Higgins Lake area, come from the Higgins Lake area, down to Houghton Lake area, and then back through, get them back into St. Helen to get back on the freeway and head home. And that's the goal of the freshwater trail. We're really excited about that project. It's going extremely well, and we will have at least, at a minimum, five fish statues to visit. We are, we were able to do that with some of the COVID funds that were given to the EDC, and basically what we have happening now is we do have some commercial businesses that want to fund their own fish. So it's going to grow. So we're really, really kind of excited about that. This is mixed housing, we've already talked about that. One of the other things that we're doing is we're starting a school internship scholarship program, investing in our use, investing in the future. One of the things that we recognize is that as, not to be demeaning or anything, but most of our businesses are established elderly people, and we have use that they'll move out of our county and they'll be very successful in another county. Well, why not establish a program to get them to stay here? To establish their businesses here, to work here. So that's kind of what we're doing. We're getting a internship scholarship program. We've talked to the high schools in the area, and they're giving us students, and actually the students are going to be coming in tomorrow to introduce themselves. So we're really excited. We're really excited about, you know, the Economic Development Committee and what we're accomplishing. We do work with Julie from MSU Extension, several projects we have done with them. The FIT, the First Impressions Tour, was handled through the EDC, and that's still continuing to this day. I know Richfield Township, we still have a committee, 12 people, and we're turning, and we are actually 11 people, because we wanted the odd number, but we're turning, you know, people still want to be on that committee, and that's been.
Two years now?
Every bit of two years. It hasn't died out yet, because people are excited, people want to be involved, and that's what we're trying to do here, is give people the opportunity. So yes, so we're we're really, really looking forward to an exciting year. The unfortunate side of it is, you know, our funding's running down. And I really hope that in your next funding cycle, that you can find some way of continuing funding this vital part of our community. I think it's needed within our community, so I really hope that you can look for some way of being able to provide some funding as you have in previous years. Any questions for me about the EDC?
I think so.
Yep. Mark Milburn, Commissioner Milburn is our representative to it. He's been instrumental, guiding us along, you know, to assist the commission here, and, you know, everything's been running smooth, real good relationship, and we're really excited about it. We have some, you'll hear more, we got some exciting things in in the works if it comes out. We're looking at broadband, we got a broadband committee, we got a public relations committee, housing, youth committee, marketing, we've got all sorts of stuff. And we're partnering with people. We partner with Julie, we partner with the three Chamber of Commerce. Every first Monday of the month, we have a meeting with the chambers and just kind of get some ideas for marketing and bringing people in, and what we can and can't do. So we're excited about it, we're excited to serve you. Everybody on the committee is very, very excited. They love serving on it, and it's a great group. So with that, I'll let you carry on.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other visitors? Unfinished business, the 2025 Person of the Year. Thank you, ma'am. Oh, come on. So on the Person of the Year, we had two nominations. One was Kathleen Jernigan, or, yeah, Jernigan, and the other was Mr. Bruce Bentley. And so, Michelle, we'll read the vote here in just a moment.
I'm roll, please. Mr. Bentley.
So I believe the first meeting in December is when the award would be given.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have to say, two very good candidates, that's, you know, I think we had two great people who have done a lot of things in this county, so kudos to both of them.
Absolutely. The lake level meeting scheduled for 2025, 2026. So as we kind of talked a little bit about this at our last meeting, we're coming into the winter months, not a lot happens with the structures in those winter months, so we need to decide on whether we want to incorporate any updates, if there are, into our regular meeting, or if we want to continue to have a separate lake level meeting at the first meeting of each month. Yes?
My recommendation is to incorporate.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well. I know the Advisory Committee may start sometime, maybe December, did you say maybe? Can't remember, I'm looking at the.
So.
Water budget?
So the Advisory Committee, the applications were put online, they were also sent out through constant contacts, notices went out in the Houghton Lake Resorter and the Crawford Avalanche, those will run for two weeks. The deadline to apply is October 31. And then at that point, Commissioner Wolfson, myself, and Chase will get together, and we will, by the first meeting in November, we will have who will be sitting on that committee. I have spoken to all three associations. We do have the two people for the HLPOA, which will be Mr. Greg Seemack, and the Higgins Lake Foundation will be Nancy Lamb. Rex is working with the townships. I'm not positive if we've actually heard back from any of the townships yet, but.
Yep.
I think that the reason I ask is just because I think that timing also fares well with rolling it into our regular meetings, not a separate meeting when there is such a kind of a lull right now on things that can be done or whatnot, so I think that fits well.
And if for some reason there's a bunch to report, we can always add.
Absolutely.
Add it, add that meeting.
If we rolled it into our regular meeting, would it be a line item, or would it go under unfinished business?
I just do unfinished. See, the airport taxi lane sponsor contract, I did email that out. I received that information from the airport manager, Eric Gerusch, yesterday. He wanted me to remind everybody that this project is 100% grant funded. This was the project that the county did put up the $15,000, but will be getting that $15,000 back, and that should be happening anytime. The total of the estimated project is $264,610. Of that, $251,379 will be paid through the federal share, and the state share will be $13,231, therefore leaving the local share match of zero. We need a motion on November 5, giving permission to chairperson to sign that sponsor contract so that they can get going on that. Anybody have any questions?
I appreciate that he said the.
Yep. Thank you. We have nothing under new business, so we are at our motions, whenever our clerk is ready.
Move to adopt the L4402 statement showing taxable valuations and mills apportioned by the County Board of Commissioners for the year 2025, and authorize Jamie Hauserman, Equalization Director, to sign the L4402, thereby authorizing and directing the various assessing officers to spread the rates against the taxable valuation for 2025.
Any discussion? Roll call. Morley.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to reappoint Kathy Pardo, Republican, to the Roscommon County Board of Canvassers for a four-year term beginning November 1, 2025, through October 31, 2029.
No move, Madam Chair.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call. Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried. Committee report. Commissioner Wilson.
We're the Materials Management Planning. I had a meeting Monday with a person from Eagle. It appears that that program may be falling apart somewhat. It looks like at this point, we can continue through the planning phase and get reimbursed by the state for that, even though we still have not received money from our first reimbursement request. It looks like at this point, what is being done is everything through this year, this coming year, is being thrown into the first year's money slot. And the person from Eagle explained to me that there was a lot of money not tapped in that program yet, because a lot of places haven't even put in their work plan yet. In some places, like us, we're trying to save money so we can put it into an implementation program. Since that money wasn't spent, it's not expected that more money will be granted, allocated for the second year. So my response to him was, we'll continue as long as we have the money coming, but I'm not going to sign on the dotted line that locks me in if the program falls apart.
Madam Chair.
Just a quick question on this, because it came up at the Garrish Township meeting from Supervisor Hill. He would like a update on that? He wasn't sure what the status.
I talked to him yesterday.
Oh, yesterday, great, okay, thank you.
So anyway, we're still working through that process. Then I attended the Association of Counties meeting on Monday also, and MSU presented about if solar comes to your county and things what you can expect and so forth. That was the main thing there. Rob Palorito from Senator Tway King's office announced that revenue sharing is pretty much going to be what you got last year for the counties, which was good news on the budget. Been working on some of the opioid stuff. Vanessa has sent me a list of services available, quite an extensive list, and I appreciate that. So when we're compiling all that information, that's going to be helpful. Also, Jody and I have started the process of coming up with a job description for the part-time coordinator for that program. Also, Mark and I have a meeting at 1 o'clock today with the Childcare Assessment Center, because we were going to involve them, and then they had submitted a proposal a couple days ago. Thought came to my mind, it would be a terrible thing to say to a child, we can't help you because you're not from Roscommon County. I think we're going to have a meeting and try and make it so all the counties that participate with a Childcare Assessment Center, put some opium money into their program so that we don't have to tell a child, we can't provide that service because this is Roscommon's money. See what we can do with that before we, you know, move along on that end of it. Any thoughts on that?
I would agree with that, is see if whoever the Child Assessment Center, whatever counties they're working with, if there can be a collaboration there.
Well, definitely, it goes back to not duplicating effort and funding. I also think some of those counties. I also think some of those counties she represents already contribute as well. And I just wonder where those current contributions are coming from and if their opioid funds could be used on top of that versus reducing what they're already paying for that.
No, the opioid funds can only be for an opioid program.
Oh, I understand that.
And it's a separate program she wants to implement there.
I understand. My point was, they do give money out of their general fund for them, and I would hate to see that reduced because they're going to use opioid money to support them separately and not continue to do both. That was my question. And I don't know that. I don't sit on their...
That would be kind of stinky on that county's part, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I... Bored. So it's one of the questions that we might want to understand a little bit, so.
Anyway, we're going to see if we can work through on that. I didn't see a big variation into implementing that program at this point when this is a possibility. And, you know, we'll have to contact the counties and see what we can work out with them. Because I think it was Hayosco County, Crawford County, Atsico County, and Oscoda County. They also service those children. And, you know, it'd be a shame to have to not give services to everybody that comes through that system. So I'm working on that. There has been three new people applied for the Higgins Lake Advisory Committee beyond what's applied the last round. And I've contacted the townships. Haven't heard anything back on them yet. I think somebody has heard that maybe Beaver Creek Township Supervisor is going to take that position, but I haven't heard for sure yet. A week ago Monday, I took the train ride with Senator Hoytenga's office people. There was only about four commissioners on that train ride. The rest were state people. Did have some conversation with a senator. Couple of things came to light on that whole deal. We met at the Anderson Green Elevator in Standish. They did a presentation, and what they were saying was, prior to that elevator and the train transporting grain to Ohio, farmers were paying around $4 a bushel to transport grain to Ohio. Now it's $1.75. So that makes you understand that that facility put a lot of money back into the farming community for Northern Michigan, which turned out to be a lot. Also, another thing that came to mind is when we got to the Aruko Plant in Grayling, that building is so big, the train drove inside and we unloaded. And when they first came to the Roscommon Board of Commissioners, I wasn't a commissioner there. I was Drain Commission. It was announced that they're going to hire about 200 people. Well, then there was a lot of boo hoo about, well, they located over the county line. But when you look at it, there's a reason. The facilities are there. And then over the years, you hear, well, they didn't hire 200 people. They, 15 people, so it all made it. I'm here to tell you that the stories are not true. When I was looking in that plant, the first thing that I noticed, we watched the sawdust come in one end and go out aboard on the other end of it. First thing I noticed is hundreds of electric motors running stuff. So I talked to one of the maintenance people. He says, "Yeah, we probably have 1,000 electric motors." They have 24 millites, 15 electricians. They do employ over 200 people there, and they run 24/7, 365 days a year. And we do know some of that money comes back to this county also. So it was a good thing. You know, I would have never guessed the demand for that product would have been that they have to run 365 days a year if they do. So it was quite impressive. Quite impressive. I guess that's pretty much it. Yeah.
Commissioner Morley.
I'll save some of this for board comments. So I'll start with, I was asked to come back to the Senior Center here in Roscommon to really clarify the role that the county has with the Commission on Aging. And there continued, I know Commissioner Milburn knows this, concerns about being able to do takeout versus in-home meals. Lot of confusion there, anyway. So it was quite enlightening trying to work with DMSKA and that group to understand as well as why does Crawford get to do it? That might not be a total truth. And so, anyway, they're just a great group of people. I appreciate that. On the 16th, I met with Taylor for the Central Michigan District Health Department as well as Trustee Ossling in Garrish in regards to the request that the Health Department needs our GIS information as well as they need information from what Garrish has collected and mapped and dotted and plotted. There was just a lot of miscommunication between what was the request, how much does the county with our fees going to charge them? So every conversation between all three parties never matched. So we at least sat down to say, what is it that you truly are asking for? And what is it truly that the township needs in order to do this? There was discussion about, I know that the state's been working on a statewide, you know, sewer proposal piece. It's been going on for a long time, but they're all trying to work on moving forward anyway. And it sounds like the Central Michigan District Health Department and what they use with their fetch system and whatnot might be the one that the state would actually ask every county to do. So that's not a guarantee, but they feel pretty confident that there wouldn't be a lot of duplication of effort. We'll wait and see. On the 16th, the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board in Traverse City, the new CEO, Linda Zaylor, Zeeler, is there. I find it interesting in a time when their budget is so in dire straits that the offer that she was given for salary, she asked for it to be reduced by 5%. She said, "I think that this is not the time to..." I appreciate the offer, but I think it should be reduced based upon what we're doing right now. So that was a nice comment. The Chief Information Officer talked a lot about the security of all the information that is housed there with these patients. And they actually, for their very first time assessment that their group got, they got the best scores in the whole state of all the programs based upon how they're managing people's private information. So that was a positive, too. Still conversations around the NMRE and the money that they're supposed to be giving back. They kind of came up with, I'll say, a counter offer that will avoid, this started in 2017. There's money that's been owed since then to Northern Lakes. Some of it's come, some of it's needed more audits. So NMRE said, "If you will just take $3 million," and there was a calculation for all that, "and just let it go, but you're not going to get the $10 million that you believe your audit records show that you're supposed to get." So I'm sharing it to you as a county because it was very important to all the other commissioners who's over on that. They said, "The counties need to know that if we go this route and we keep pushing forward and not take that offer, we're saying we're just giving up maybe 10 mil versus 3 mil." Conversations came back to who's going to fill it and that it is the county's responsibilities to fill whatever the gap is. Lot of discussion around that's not totally accurate. They don't know that because none of the counties there felt like they could contribute any more to the program that they've already been doing because of poor budget management going forward. So that conversation is still going on. I don't know where it will land. Those are the main, for at least those committees. I'll save my rest for the board comments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Milburn.
I've been out of town, hence my voice changing there. It was 108 degrees in Egypt. In regard to what Kim just mentioned in COA, I'll ask Debra Looney, the director, to clarify. I know there's been some ambiguity throughout the years as far as, but we must follow the rules. Otherwise, we could potentially lose funding. So I'll ask Director Looney to be here next meeting with your permission, Madam Chair, to clarify any ambiguity and concerns. I did attend, my wife and I and my son Warren attended the NMCAA get-together head start yesterday at the center over by Powell's Restaurant. Very well attended. A lot of MSU students and folks were there to showcase the good works that Action E C does in town. And I did go to the COA yesterday, and what a wonderful lunch. Go ahead, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Russo.
I have, oh, we have three more of our union negotiations today.
I had the agenda meeting. Still continuing work on the Higgins Lake Appeals meeting with Hi-Fi. I believe currently the graph that's on the Roscommon Lake Levels website is correct. I know that they are not emailing out currently information as they're still working. They have, I also saw yesterday on there that they have now implemented the date range that people can select past history and it can go back. You can have a specific date, days, years, that type of thing. We're waiting for them to implement that and then being able to actually go to an actual, one of the structures and click on that, and it actually give you a bigger screen, like a pop-up screen, a bigger one, that is easier to read versus just a small little graph. Eventually, discussion took place about doing away with the daily emails as all information then would be up on the Roscommon Lake Levels website and that people would be able to go directly to the website to get the information that they need versus the daily continuous emails. The USGS gauge is going to remain on Higgins Lake. I know that when we had discussion on Hi-Fi, that, I'm still waiting for Chase to get back, but something had moved the monitor, and that's why it was reading. Something, someone, we don't know, but Chase is wanting to look into having live feed cameras that would go directly to his phone for the future if we continue to keep that monitor in place. I spoke earlier that the Advisory Committee applications went out. Other than that, that's all I have. Now we are at public comment. Is there any public comment? Board comment? Commissioner Morley? Would you like to start?
Yeah, I'll give a little bit of a brief update of the two areas that I represent. One, the Village Council met on the October 13th. Ray already stole part of that thunder because Economic Development Group and their teamwork with the Freshwater Trails is what I was going to give people an update. So thank you for doing that. Just a great way to bring everybody in this county together. So they've done a lot of work for that. Rocktoberfest, I talked about this the last time. I thought I'd share this because they did a report on that at this meeting. They actually have a company that tracks the cell data, and they know where you came from and how many people were there. So there were 1,900 people at Rocktoberfest this year, which is up about 500. And about 40% of that number traveled from a different county to come here. Amazing. So anyway, I thought that was pretty interesting that they had that data. They do have a, they have a housing grant for $400,000 that's going to the Hall Duplex Complex on Main Street. Kind of goes in the tie, which I think the group who's really working on economic development here, the housing group, their Redstone Housing Project is still working. They meet weekly. That will go to their Planning Commission first, and then it'll be voted on by the village because that's where that's located. So housing is truly a huge issue in this community for many reasons. So I'm really glad that all those groups are trying to work collectively to do that for us. And on a positive note, we were one in four of the finalists for the Michigan Municipal League Community Excellence Award. Didn't win it, but we're the top four in the whole state. So that was pretty nice. Garrish Township Meeting, they approved the hiring of Jonah Schute to fill their vacant lieutenant position for the police department. They're looking at a temporary traffic control order, so there'll be no parking there across from Sharp's Corner. It's become pretty dangerous. So they're going to apply for that over there. That impacts all of us who drive through that area in this county, so. Kudos to Susan Cimac. She's been doing a lot of work in that Rex Department. And they got, they're using about 14,000 for what they call a, oh, a revolution spinner for the kids to play in the park that they've redone. And they're also working on some grant money, too, that will go for, it's a Moby mat for those who have wheelchairs and things like that. So they've done an awful lot of work for that. There was a little debate at that meeting about, is this grant money? Do we approve this out of our money? But it all got worked out. Great debate amongst their board, but they all came to the same conclusion. And so they'll be giving that money to her to do the spinner. So other than that, those were just some of the pieces from those meetings. Thanks.
Commissioner Milburn.
Well, we met, it's a big deal. Ray, thank you for your update today. And Michelle, congratulations. Nice write-up in the paper in Resort in regard to your award. So go ahead, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Russo. Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes. Also noted, our clerk was in the paper, which was nice. I think the board, being the delegated authority of the lakes, needs to have a discussion about how we monitor the lake level of Higgins Lake going forward. There's been issues with some of the, like, Hi-Fi stuff. And it's created some issues. And I think the board, as a delegated authority, needs to make a decision on what we do in the future to monitor the lake level in Higgins Lake.
We can put that on our next meeting.
Do you have any specific requests this time, Rex?
My opinion is we go back to USGS solely. But it's a board decision. It's not just my decision.
I respect your opinion.
I would, I'd support putting that on a work session for discussion. I think it's important for the community to hear that dialogue and the pros and cons, so I'd support that.
We can put it on for our next work session. Anything else? I just wanted to, I had been talking with Jody on and off and knowing that we have our union negotiations, our healthcare stuff that we're dealing with, budgets, all of that, that we probably will have to have some special meetings to fill in those gaps. Seeing as we're also on timelines for things that have to be done. So if we do, I'll try to stay consistent probably with Wednesdays, if at all possible. So maybe the next couple of months, just kind of keep Wednesdays available, if at all. Possible, yep.
Madam Chair, are you talking 10-ish or 11-ish or 1-ish?
Probably 10.
10-ish is good.
10-ish is good.
Mornings. If at all possible. I do know that tentatively, we have our special meeting for November 12th. A lot of that will depend upon, and that, I believe, is in the afternoon now. But that will, that has to do with the voting and stuff like that, but...
10-ish is good.
Is that meeting canceled if the vote goes down?
Yeah. Yep. So we wouldn't need it then because then we don't have to change the LL402 or whatever we just approved. That's all that I have. With no further board comments, this meeting would be adjourned, and our next Budget and Finance Committee of the whole meeting starts at 11 o'clock. Finance Committee of the whole meeting starts at 11 o'clock. Roll call, please. Censor.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
To the manager.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Morley. Here. Yes?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Being at the same time.
Censor? Yes. Milburn?
Yes.
Russo? Mission carried. Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment for agenda items? Unfinished business, there was nothing there. New business, Roscommon County 2025 Budget Review.
I'm back here, hi. So Andy could be behind you, that's okay. Just you, you can see. You can talk to me. Okay. So, I just added a new slide and I don't need to do that. Okay. So this will be as of September 30th of 2025. That's my blank slide. So these are the highlights for you to keep in mind as we go through and Rex, I'll keep it as summary brief as possible. So we are at 74.79% of our fiscal year completed. We have 21 of 26 pay periods that are included in our reporting through the end of September. The HSA fully funded for non-union. We have made 10 of 12 healthcare premiums through the end of September. And since that runs about $200,000, that's a big chunk for you guys to be aware of. We do have nine of the 12 defined benefits, so that's your traditional pension, retirement payments completed. 21 of 21 of our defined contribution and our hybrid payments completed. We are past our largest revenue months as we have ended through August and September. And then we do have some state and federal grant reimbursements that were slowed through the federal and state budget slowdowns and shutdowns that have incurred. So they are pending, but they do not show in all of our revenues right now. So the first slide shows you just the revenues for funds 101 through 261, again, as through the end of September. One of the areas of note is just to show that in the general fund, we have jumped in the last two months to 88% funded to budget for our revenues. That is largely due to the fact that our ad valorem taxes are collecting. We do have one remaining state revenue sharing payment of 162,000. Our cost allocation distribution of roughly 250,000. And then the total ad valorem tax is actually at 94.47% of what our budget is for collections. On the next slide, you have funds 263 through 861 for revenues. A couple areas of note for you, the childcare fund reimbursement from the state for August and September is still remaining along with the 50% of our general fund allocation. So we will allocate what needs to be allocated at the end of the year to the childcare fund, but similar to last year, if they are under budget, then we don't end up having to allocate the full amount, which always makes our general fund happier. So we do have the Higgins Lake LLC sad winter tax reimbursement that will be in the works. Our airport is at 50% appropriation remaining. That is along with the project flow-through that you'll see through the fund for revenues and expenses as they come through. Our juvenile justice reimbursement from the state for last quarter and there is a reduced indirect cost allocation, so you'll see that in Fund 272 for juvenile justice, looking lower at 32.36. The indirect cost allocation that is received in this fund is actually specific to certain expenses in the childcare fund and with some of the changes that have come through what the state is fully reimbursing for or reimbursing higher for, that has reduced that indirect cost allocation as it has come through to that. So those revenues are lower. This is my favorite slides, as it comes through, you can see where the general fund has truly caught up in the last few months to our budgeted revenues, so now we are looking on par for the course. And obviously, we are at that 92.75% of budgeted across the board for the general fund, so that is, that's a positive for us. Expenses for our funds, 101 through 261. So we do have the appropriations, again, that we need to think about when we look at money spent out of the general fund. So we have a total of $344,079.80 that is remaining to be paid or allocated to the Central Michigan District Health Department, Community Mental Health, Childcare Fund, Airport, Law Library, and our MCAG participation fees. That one's about 6,500. So the totality of that still to be transferred is 344,7980. The cost allocations that we talked about receiving as revenues into the general fund, those have not yet come out of our special funds. So your sheriff, your animal, counseling services, Brownfield is exempt from that, our 911 central services, veterans, all have cost allocation payments that will be made to the general fund. So obviously, those are going to increase their revenues as they come forward as well, or increase their expenses as well. One of the areas that I will note that's on this page is for both Central Dispatch and, which is 261, and Fund 207, which is our Sheriff Road Patrol, the changes in staffing, even though they're higher than they were last year, those have made for reduced expenditures as well. There isn't a lot of note under Funds 263 through 861. Some of the things are pretty close to, pretty close to where we were budgeted at, our county housing program. That's always kind of a stab in the dark based upon who we have apply and how many projects are qualified for in a certain timeframe, but essentially, we have, we have helped one more person than we did last year and we budgeted based on last year's assistance for that. So that's actually a really good thing on that. Your Roscommon County Commission on Aging has received 99.55% of their total budget to date, so that is the flow-through money that stands in there. Our commissary inmate trust account, which is the account that is specific to be utilized for anything that happens over next door, that is where when they buy, the inmates buy White's food, they pay for it out of their pocket, we collect it. That expense is quite large, but they had to buy a new, I'm going to call it a motherboard, I don't know what else to call it. It's this really huge panel board that was about $150,000. So that was purchased, that includes the lock, safety, cameras, all of the door mechanisms, so that was pretty in there. And then the airport fund, again, looks really low because we will have that flow-through for the expenses of the projects, just like we will on the revenues, those will be recorded with our 2025 audit. Overall, if you just kind of look at the, look at the pictures, expense-wise, we are still running pretty well. Overall, the funds are 69.5% to budgeted, being quite low, even though we know there are still some considerations to come in, so. One of the things that I like to do is I like to look at where we are this year versus last year. And the best way to do this, in my opinion, is through a graph instead of the numbers. So you can see that the light purple is actually 2024 revenues compared to the kind of bluish purple, which is 2025, and then that turquoise is actually the difference between the two. So for the general fund specifically, we actually have $1,432,867.57 currently more in the budget. And that is in large part due to tax increases, the ad valorem tax increase that has come through, so. Expenses-wise, we're actually still looking pretty good as comparable to. We have seen roughly a 5%, 5.6% increase in our general fund expenses compared to last year, but as you can see, even though the difference is fairly minimal, we budgeted pretty tight and all of our department heads are keeping it very well. One of the, one of the areas that is kind of on par for, for moving forward is the Sheriff Road Patrol Fund. I will tell you that for that, they have, they have purchased several new vehicles this year that basically they came into kind of like a bulk savings package, so that has changed that expenses, but they are still below budget. Under our general fund departments, working forward with the revenue, the 000 primary is where we see that ad valorem tax come in, that is where we're going to see our state revenue sharing come in, cost allocation funds come in. We are currently at 88.93% of that to date, so we are well on track to achieve the budget, if not slightly exceeded in that area. Across the board, everybody is, is doing pretty well with their revenues. We have some areas that are exceeding expectations, the Clerk Register of Deeds Office. Michelle's been doing a heck of a good job budgeting the last few years, so. Those revenues continue to, to show a positive turn. I think the Register of Deeds is probably, probably one of your strongest areas when we have the higher housing markets that help with us as well. Some of the other areas, equalization, that actually includes those costs for GIS services and it also includes addressing costs that are associated with that as well, so we have seen a pretty good uptick in revenues for that. Elections, once again, represents that grant that came through that Clerk Stevenson had explained to you several meetings ago. Buildings and grounds actually had two wrap grants through MMRMA that were approved for some security, security measures. And then soil erosion is actually significantly higher this year than it was last year. Last year this time, it's not on there, but we're at roughly $36,000. So that is just that continuous oversight between Greta and Mr. Shepke that are keeping those processes moving, so. The remaining departments for the general fund, 285 through 918 for revenues, show a very similar return. The sheriff, 305 administration, is actually the sheriff's administration, that department actually includes, for revenues, that includes some of the reimbursements for like drug buyback programs, and that has actually been lower this year, which is why we show a, kind of an underfall of the revenues for that area. Front of the Court actually is doing extremely well this year compared to last year. I think that there has been some really good due diligence in managing their processes in their programs this year and it's definitely, definitely showing in their revenues across the board, both in the money that comes to the general fund and then in their own 215 fund as well across the board. Dive Team revenues, just so you know, that is donations they receive, so just means that we budgeted for $1,000 and they got one reimbursed to them, so that, that's a nice thing to see them, you know, reimbursed for. General Fund Department revenues across the board, again, you can see the budget versus the actual revenues and you can see that those, those larger areas are really quite on par, especially considering we're at roughly 75% of our budget. We are looking right now as just a little over $10 million collected for our general fund departments as we head into October. So expenses are showing favorable as well. We are currently definitely looking at some, some good trends as we move forward. There are minimal departments with the exception of the jury commission, but that's not really the jury commission's fault because the more jury trials you have, the more jury commission meetings you have to have, is slightly over, but their budget is so small that it, it really doesn't have that large of an impact on that. Some of the other areas that you'll see, elections, but again, that's that grant in and out that was suggested. Additionally, we do have this interesting elections for November that are going on that our clerk's office is dealing with, with, which were expenses that can't really be anticipated if somebody is going to a recall.
They'll be reimbursed.
Thank you. I love the reimbursement costs for that. But overall, you'll see that everyone is, is pretty on par as they move forward with those for their expenses. Definitely trending lower in, in all of the major departments as they move. You have the same trend as you continue for funds 335 through, or Departments 335 through 990 for expenses moving forward. You can see there, like, for instance, under the airport appropriation, 50% appropriation, so there is still that additional 50% that will come through for that. Down towards the bottom, you can see the transfers out for the Law Library, landfills, MIDC, which has been 100% transferred. MIDC actually runs on the state fiscal year, so that has to be fully transferred by the end of September, just kind of as an FYI from us, so it can show. Transfers out to the childcare fund and the liquor tax appropriation are also noted in there, so you can see where we are at for those. This just kind of is, is a little, little brief of the departments as they look for what our actual expenses are and where they are to date. The big bar in the middle is the jail. That being said, just looking at the picture, you can tell that our jail is actually doing a pretty exceptional job of managing their expenses. And since that is a large cost for the general fund, as taking care of people, especially people with drug addictions and mental health issues is expensive, that's always one of my favorite. We do have 71.45% of budgeted expenses to date across the general fund, so that is, that is important to note on there. This one is just another look at September 2024 versus September 2025 for your general fund department revenues, just showing you where we are at, the difference again being that teal color, revenues for 2025 are your darker kind of bluish purple and the light purple is your revenues for 2024. So that's kind of a good picture snapshot of where those revenues are higher this year versus last year. Same thing with expenses for 2024 versus 2025 as you go, as you go across the board again, and God bless the jail, they are doing really well, especially compared to last year. So same kind of pictures, most of our departments are fairly, fairly flat with expenses. You'll notice that there, there really aren't any that show an exception to being overspent, so that is a great thing. The one area to note is just the employee hospital insurance. Just so you have an idea with that one, we are fairly on budget with that, but we have, retiree healthcare is also in there, those retirees that were grandfathered into that. So we do have a couple more this year and next year than we have had previously to hit that age gap of 60 through 64 through there. Payroll, we are, through our heavy overtime months of summer, we will have, in the insurance department, you will see heavy overtime month of November. People like to hunt in Roscommon County and so you'll see those dates and those coverages come off. That's just a trend that we learned while we've been here. Additionally, the union holiday pays that they get and employee sit cash out are in the first December paycheck, so that's not in there yet as well. However, that being said, if you look at, for instance, the general fund at 69.13% of overall payroll, things are going really well. We have had some turnover and obviously, when you do have that minimal turnover, it assists you with, with your pay, so that's a great thing. Another area, when you look at the general fund, is the jail actually is a huge part of our payroll for that and those expenses have been maintained very well, so that's, that's kind of a shout-out to Lieutenant Beck as well. Sheriff Road Patrol Fund as well as 911, again, you'll see that they're a little bit lower and those are in, in part mostly due to staffing that has come through for that. Few of the areas to, to point out to you, just so you're, just so you can see them, the Higgins Lake, Holton Lake, and Lake St. Helen, SAD accounts or funds are those last two, 839, 840, and 841. So those expenses that are in there for payroll are our Lakes Manager to date in those, so. And obviously, we did not have a budget for that at the beginning of the year, so at some point, we're going to make an amendment to, to wash those out. Again, there is your payroll by fund, just showing you where we're at in that picture so that we have those ideas moving forward. Benefits by fund shows a very similar trend to what we had for payroll. General fund is at roughly 73.6%. Again, we've got 75- Again, we've got seventy-five percent of healthcare, dental vision and life insurance premiums made as of the end of September. And there is in there the opiate settlement funds, just to show that to you because that's obviously kind of a new one for both payroll and benefits. This is, the twenty twenty-five budget is what was approved by the Board of Commissioners for the project in its entirety. But obviously we will be well underneath that for the year because the project will only run for four months. So that is, that is no, so that is that recently approved program for you as one to move forward. More fun, more fun slides just because I like slides because they show a really good picture. Retirement by fund, this is a little bit higher, but this number, the numbers that we have that make up your retirement are in three different buckets is the best way that I can tell you. Every year we do receive the total amount from MERS that will have to be contributed for our defined benefit program. So that comes forward from them and then is essentially divided up by either people that are currently participating in a defined benefit program or those who have retired and the department that they retired from are then credited with, with that amount per person. So that is a set in stone number that we must pay. It doesn't wiggle on an annual basis unless we decide that we have more to, to contribute to the unfunded liability at the end of every year, which we haven't had in a few years. So that is the first portion of that. The second budget is the hybrid retirement, which we do have a few small groups that are in the hybrid. That roughly trends at about thirteen point eight percent of payroll and allows for both a little bit of a defined benefit and a defined compensation. So it's kind of like the best of two worlds combined together at a lot smaller cost and a lot less risk to the county to grow a unfunded liability. The final one is our defined compensation that all of our new non-union employees participate in along with our nine one one staff. And that is anywhere three, four or five percent with a three, four or five percent match by the county. But overall, retirement wise, we are trending right at sixty-nine point twenty-six percent across all of our funds. A general fund is right on par with budget as well as most of the other funds as they move forward. More fun stuff, this is my favorite graph because it's so big when they come out like this. So this again just gives you that idea of where we are budgeted and total to date. The other portion of that, and then my next slide shows it even better, just kind of shows you where that retirement benefits, who's got the lion's share and what buckets that come out of. So speaking of buckets, I decided I liked this one the other day. So I kind of wanted to give the board and then the public, if they ever choose to go online and look at this later, where are human resource costs are by funds, where are all those payroll retirement? We keep talking about funds and general funds and so, so where do those things come from? So if you look across the board, so our payroll costs by fund, the general fund is by far the highest at fifty-three percent. And just as a reminder to anyone, the general fund includes Board of Commissioners, Administration Office, Clerk Register of Deeds, Treasurer, Equalization, IT, Maintenance, Grounds, all of your courts except Friend of the Court, Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Sheriff Administration and the jail plus a couple smaller ones. So that really gives us over half of our human resources costs for payroll at fifty-three percent as that moves forward. Our next largest payroll cost by fund comes into public safety at nineteen percent for the Sheriff Road Patrol Fund. And then the five percent is actually nine one one as that comes in there. So just to kind of show you. Retirement follows the same trend. It is a little bit higher because we do still have that outstanding defined benefit cost that runs both for the jail and for former retirees for non-union participants. So that actually shows sixty-three percent of our total retirement costs come from our general fund. Noteworthy for anybody to remember is that the general fund is fines, fees and actual costs that we are legally allowed to collect from. And then additionally, that ad valorem tax. So when people look at that big, you know, three point eight one seven six amount to the retirement, the, the thing that I always ask people to think about is that money that they pay goes to fund almost this whole building of staff that are in there. And so that sits at sixty-three percent and then your Sheriff Road Patrol is at twenty-three percent of that as well. So then for benefit costs, no surprise that our benefits cost, the general fund, obviously we've got the highest amount of people across the board, so those sit at sixty percent for the general fund and then fourteen percent for our Sheriff Road Patrol. Kind of as a conclusionary of where we're at sitting at the end of September, my general, my general answer is always a conservative, hey, we're doing pretty good, we've budgeted well. The people that are in charge of each department, fiscal managers for each of the departments are doing an exceptional job. We have not had yet any major expenses that we have not been able to finagle into the budget. So that's a positive, no shockers, no surprises, we still have a little bit to go. So where we're sitting right now, looking at what we could estimate for revenues and expenditures for twenty twenty-five, we are potentially looking at an increase to our fund balance percentage for the end of the year. The general fund is trending at approximately one percent above our budgeted revenues and roughly two percent below our budgeted expenses. And that's where you'll get that difference for your addition into. I would say that your anticipated for our general fund fund balance is basically another four hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars and thirty-six cents, placing our fund balance at twenty-three point ten percent based on twenty twenty-five's actual numbers. The year end appropriations obviously will determine the variance. That being said, if we are lucky enough to not have to fully appropriate to the childcare fund, that could show that go up a little bit. But if our new Director of Buildings and Maintenance comes in and tells me that he's found some issues with some rooftop units that have to be replaced for seventy thousand dollars, that's going to be a surprise. And so that'll throw off that difference. So just where those numbers fall at the final will really appropriate. One of the big areas that's always to me a question mark that I hold my breath until the year end closes is childcare fund. We have had two years since I've been here where we've had to allocate over a million additional dollars. So I always keep that in my, in my head as we move forward with that. All of our special funds excluding animal control, sorry DeeDee, are actually doing really well. Animal control had their unexpected increase in expenses for having to redo the whole heating and air conditioning project that was approved last year and put into place this year. The good news is it is working. And I think spending, spending that portion, it, it was a huge spend down on the fund balance for this year. But it is a lot, it is a lot less expensive to have fixed that and done it correctly so that the animals, visitors and our employees are in a healthy environment. So I'm glad it worked and we have somebody for you to work with now. But yeah, so that will be their significant decrease, but overall it was definitely worth it. That is my twenty twenty-five.
Any questions for Jody?
Thank you, Jody, you have a nice presentation. People fall asleep today.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the conclusion page, you're showing a fund balance of two mil, over two mil, but on the second line anticipated is four hundred nineteen thousand. Is that four hundred nineteen thousand from this year's budget that puts us into a twenty-three fund balance? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
You thought I was sleeping, didn't you?
I knew you weren't asleep, you watch, as long as I make it big enough, you're good. So yes, so that would be in addition, would be another four hundred and nineteen. And then the flip side of that is whatever we end with, if we could say we could end at twenty-three point ten percent in twenty twenty-five, but if our budget is twelve point five million in expenditures for twenty twenty-six, that's going to drop down to like nineteen percent fund balances of twenty twenty-six. So it's always a moving target, but.
Madam Chair, just one little question. So can you talk about the donations coming in in revenue? That's what people saying, there's some money. So if a service was provided in kind, does that get counted in the budget or it just doesn't show up as an expense? Does that make sense to ask that question right?
Yes, so, and I'm, actually we talked about the Children's Assessment Center earlier, so I'll use that. So for the Children's Assessment Center, so we actually provide, we provide some services for them through the sheriff's office that are funded and reimbursed to us. But there are additional investigation processes that conduct that, that's an in-kind donation to them. So the only time it ever gets counted is when they submit for their budget that this number of hours at this expense. So, yeah.
And the only reason I ask is like, I assume there's a lot of people who help volunteer, people who'll say, I'll do that for a lower cost versus that because you're the county and we're trying to help you or they'll donate an item. If you really look at the whole budget of what it truly would cost us if none of that happened, it would cost us more, there'd be more expense, correct?
I would agree with that. And Michelle, can I use you as an example? Okay, so I know it hasn't been this year so much, but there were a couple of years in a row where our clerk traveled all across the county to provide marriage ceremonies to people and didn't charge to the county or those people mileage for doing that. So those would, those would be, I think, a great example of this is something that someone that works here chose to do to volunteer time and not incur any more additional costs on the county or to the residents to make it happen. Thank you for letting me use you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we have the twenty twenty-six budget update. Our expenses are about three point three percent above the twenty twenty-five budget. So that's another positive portion to see in there, so knock on wood. Obviously, any new obstacles that might come to play would need to be included in there. And when I say that, there has been, been some discussions about like including a project into IT that would allow for a full overhead announcement system throughout the building. Because we have no way to do any kind of overheads, you know, and that's a twenty, twenty thousand dollar project type of a thing that as we're going through has kind of been kept to the side. But if there's room for something to be added, I'm getting to you Julie, don't worry. You know, that would be something that, you know, if there's room, that could be, it could be a one-time, one-time type of thing that would pull forward with that. I also have two, two different departments that have made requests for, I'm going to do an air quote of some additional funding, not even asking for it to be a permitted inclusion of that. Both Economic Development and MSUE have some proposals for some additional funding to help them kind of keep some of those programs that have fallen to the wayside moving forward at least for another year. So those would be things that would kind of be like a sidebar additional for the board to consider whether or not to add or not add as it moves forward with that. See Julie, I told you. That being said, obviously our twenty twenty-six budget planning timetable is in need of adjustment. It is, it is, it is a little off. So essentially we had hoped to already have had those meetings with our department heads for individual meetings for department heads to have had those budget discussions at the beginning of October with not having really finalized budgets, not, not as far as unions, with not really having a great idea of the direction for the benefits. as unions, with not really having a great idea of the direction for the benefits because we did two different rounds of benefits. But now I think we've got a good, we've got a good handle on it. What I'm hoping that we would be able to do is to schedule the department budget meetings, those individual meetings for the last week of October, first week of November. And instead of relying solely, do, this is kind of a time thing, instead of relying solely on my two commissioners who are Budget and Finance, get those schedules out, get it to you guys, and have you sign up to attend. Doesn't matter who it is, I need two commissioners at those meetings. And then that way, everybody can have a little bit of expectation. I know it's a little, you know, little less organized, but we will have to be, especially with, especially with your court schedules, we have to be pretty flexible on how we want to do that. And I know, I know they are all willing, able, and excited to be able to present their budgets to you in that type of a one-on-one fashion again. So is, if, am I okay to move forward like that? Thumbs up? Okay, thank you. So then the other part of us moving forward that I'd like to keep in mind is regardless of the status of our union contracts, the Board of Commissioners must pass a budget, a balanced budget by the end of the year. That being said, we can always amend it if the union contracts are finalized later. There are some issues with benefits that I'm working with our new labor attorney on figuring out how that gets handled, but we can always amend the budget. Pass it on our best-case scenarios and then amend it as we move forward for those individual departments. So the publication notice or budget hearing has to be in the paper 10 days before the actual hearing. And the budget to be reviewed has to be published and available to the public also on that day that it hits the paper. That being said, that means that our last, December 17th. That would put us to the point where the budget would need to be finalized by December 3rd to have a public hearing and approve the budget on December, on December 17th. If the board chooses to schedule a special meeting in between those times, that's up to you guys. But my goal right now is to try to move forward with December 17th being the budget approval. November is always my favorite time, but this year, we'll shoot for it next year because this year's just gone. A couple other factors that are still kind of up in the works as we move through is I did, I think, last, last thing I did mention to you that we did have one, two, three, four, five, six individual job descriptions that have been submitted to Wage and Salary for requests for review of their placement. And we do not have that Wage and Salary information back yet. So if that, the process will be once Wage and Salary makes their determination, I'll get the information determination report back from them. If they're, they have found that someone needs to be adjusted, then that will come to the Board of Commissioners for review and it's the final decision on. So if, for instance, I don't know, I'm not going to pick any of them. So if, for instance, it comes back in that somebody who is currently Level 5 should actually be to Level 6, that's obviously going to make an adjustment to that department budget for us. So there's a couple of those little changes. The good news is, from what I see right now, we have wiggle room for all these kind of question marks, but not a lot of wiggle room, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Just to clear, what were the dates again, Jody? So December 3rd?
December 3rd, we would have to be published and have it in the, published in the paper and ready for the public to look at.
Got it. And then on the 17th is when we approve it?
It'd be the public hearing and approval.
Public hearing and approval.
Yes.
Okay. What I thought I heard, I just didn't write fast enough.
That's because I talk fast.
Any questions? Questions? Do we think that the six job description changes for Wage and Salary will be coming, we anticipate how long will Lo before that? Or will it fit within the timeframe?
It'll fit within the timeframe. So my, so my understanding from talking to Noel yesterday, since she chairs that, is the information has been sent out for them to review. And then, Will, do you have that information yet? Okay, I will follow up on that then. I'll make sure that gets done in enough time.
So before we start looking at publishing and that, if we have that answer first, I would.
You have to have that answer first. That's just my opinion, yes.
Thank you. Lots of information. Motions, resolutions? We have none, so we are at public comment. Is there any public comment? Come on up.
Morning still. Just a couple of highlights to bring to the board's attention as we're talking budgeting for 2026. There has been some movement amongst the county treasurers regarding the foreclosure process and those prior-year foreclosures, some pending litigation still going on. They are, we're trying to put feelers out to our state representatives to try and ask the state to include funding in their budget to help offset the cost to counties for having to pay back these retroactive claims. Currently, we're looking at in the whole state, $215 million in potential liability to counties for these retroactive claims. Our county alone, we set aside 2 million. Whether that is going to truly be enough, I'm still kind of investigating that at this point now that we've got the settlement agreement and we've entered into an inter-county caution agreement. We have made our first payment due on that of over $20,000 for that. So that is coming down the pike. I just want you all to keep that in your mind as we're looking at budgeting and what our fund balance is, money in our tax payment fund, and why we kind of hold on to that and try to spend as little as possible because we do know these events are coming down. Just within the last couple of weeks, we have got notice that there is a case out of Isabella County that is going to be heard by the U.S. Supreme Court. And the argument there is that counties should have to pay fair market value, not just the excess proceeds received at the sale, that it is a violation of their Fifth Amendment, that they are entitled to fair market value of their property regardless of what it sells for at the public auction. As that continues to come down the pike, and I get dates, I'll try and keep the board informed, but that would bankrupt multiple counties in the state if that were to pass through the Supreme Court. And it wouldn't just affect Michigan, it's going to affect other states who have similar processes as well if the U.S. Supreme Court rules in their favor. So just a few things from my office that are kind of coming down the pike. And we sit in a very good position here in Roscommon County to be able to pay out our settlements for those retroactive proceeds. But just for future and as, as you're budgeting and thinking about upcoming expenses, just keep those things in mind.
Thank you. Can you imagine? Can you imagine that? Holy moly. Yeah.
Good morning. Still morning. Board of Commissioners, my name's Julie Darden. I'm the District Director for MSU Extension for Roscommon County. Thank you to Jody for the shout-out twice during your presentation. I did submit a budget request, not only for the continuation of the funds for the telephones and the copier for next, or this coming fiscal year, but also for, to initiate again a memorandum of understanding with Michigan State University Extension. So you may be thinking, well, what's changed? We, we attempted the millage, we were unsuccessful at that last year. And I know there were some, there was deliberation about whether that millage would go forward by the board. And, and we had chosen to partner with the EDC because we see that we have some commonalities that we thought would make a strong case. We were, we were unsuccessful. Ultimately, I'm gratified that there were nearly 40% of the people that voted in favor, not enough, obviously, but it's a nice, it's a strong minority within the county. And I think we probably could have done more to get the word out. But I will also say, you know, people have to make hard decisions, and I know you're among those people that have to make difficult decisions. The reason we're asking for funds in the coming fiscal year, there's some things happening across the state that impact this decision. Eaton County has zeroed out the budget for Michigan State University Extension. Dickinson County in the Upper Peninsula has zeroed out the budget for MSU Extension. There's different reasons for both of those counties to make those decisions, but ultimately, it's a choice about priority and it's, it's where money has to go. Ingham County has decreased the budget initially nearly 90%, but because revenue sharing was included in the state's budget, they're able to come back and, and the budget is going to be reduced, but not as severely as we once thought. But this does bring us, as an unit that works with counties across the state, to think about equity. We don't have a program coordinator for 4H in Roscommon County. That's work that I've been working with other staff that serve the district to, to bridge myself. So this is, in addition to my other work, I'm working now with 4H clubs in the, in the area. And we're really proud of the work that those clubs are doing. But we're getting to a point where we can't say, well, you've got it figured out if for Roscommon, why can't you figure it out for these other counties? Because my colleagues don't necessarily have the time to manage programs, especially in counties where the programs are much larger. So that makes us look at how do we provide equity across the state? So what that looks like is that we would migrate the existing clubs that are here in Roscommon County to be, to fall under the umbrella of other counties. You would no longer have 4H programs that are specifically for this county. Youth in this county would be served, but they would be reported as being part of programs in neighboring counties, if that makes sense. So the kids will still have access to the program, the volunteers will still serve in the program, but I won't come to you and say, the Roscommon County 4H program is strong. You will not have a program any longer. That's a hard needle to thread and to explain, but what I want you to understand is, we're not, we're, we're working to make sure that youth still have the opportunity, that they can still be in, access the clubs and programs that they need to access. But those programs would fall under the umbrella of another program nearby. And that's important. Also, the 4H council would, because it's only for this county, would dissolve. Funds would be kept in a gift to Michigan State, so, or with the 4H Foundation, actually. So the, the funds that have been raised for that council would not go away either. They would still support youth in Roscommon County, but that's what we're looking at. I have, we have not moved toward that migration of programs yet because I'm aware that these deliberations are happening and that you haven't finalized your budget. And this is in no way to off, it's, I'm not offering this as a threat, I'm just saying like, we can't say to Ingham County that we're going to treat you differently from Roscommon. And that's where we're, where we're headed with those counties. So again, youth would still have access, adults would still have access, but we need to look carefully at how we manage those programs and those resources without a staff person. So if you've got questions, please reach out to me.
Thank you. Any other public comment? With any board comment? With no further board comment, this meeting is adjourned.